All right. Good morning and welcome to the Jefferson County Commission meeting. Today is a special session. Today is Wednesday, 23rd, 2021, 9:30 a.m. This meeting is virtual and also live, referred to as a hybrid type of meetings. The purpose of the special session today is to discuss and receive input from the department heads, elected officials, boards, and outside agencies regarding the use of American Rescue Plan monies that were received. We're going to run it just in very open format today and take input from the public. We're not going to really go in any type of order, especially order. We're just going to ask you to raise your hand online if you're online. Stephanie will call on you. I don't feel that we need to have a time. I can't imagine any requests more than a few minutes. After today's meeting, if any agency wants to submit or resubmit or maybe something they hear today, they might have an idea for another project, they could certainly email us. We'll leave the written comments open for two weeks. So we'll start off with that Stephanie call on the public to make it certainly double here and give a request.
So if anyone is interested in making comments, she's supposed to raise your hand by the icon and I will unmute you to make comments, or you can send me a message as well. Our first speaker is Charles Keen, the county manager of Charleston. Mr. Hennessy, I've unmuted you.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Great, thank you. So thank you to the county commissioners for allowing us to be here today. Most of you may know me as the city manager in the city of Charleston. I'm Darryl Hennessy, but I'm here today to talk to you about our on behalf of the Charleston Utility Board. And I've asked our general manager Kristin Stolliper to join me as well to answer any detailed questions you might have regarding my request. The purpose of my request here is to briefly describe a couple of positive developments that have happened with the utility board since its consolidation, but primarily to ask for a share of the county ARPA funds for legacy public service district projects, specifically the Modified Flowing Springs project. The funds, if approved for the utility board, would offset borrowing for ratepayers, which would help accelerate the equalization process. We do anticipate sending a letter to the county commissioners that will outline in more detail what I was going to say this morning. And we also anticipate that we would send letters to the city of Charleston and to the city of Ranthan asking for similar capital funding improvements. So just a couple of real quick things. The city has undertaken steps toward rate equalization. The city has recently enacted a sewer ordinance that resulted in a 5% increase for the legacy Charleston customers and a 7.5% decrease for the legacy district customers. No change in the ransom customers. Included in the improvements that the success of the recent accomplishments of the utility board is that the city's system is benefiting from the completion of the Route 9 sewer project. And that why that's important for this particular discussion is because what it has helped to do is it's provided upgrades that were part of what used to be considered the Flowing Springs project. And now, again, as a result of that, is a modified Flowing Springs project. We anticipate that the cost of the modified Flowing Springs project, which again, we see as a legacy PSD project, to be somewhere around $4.5 million. We have reached out to the state of West Virginia to get funding to help support this and other capital projects under favorable terms that were originally proposed for the PSD. We think we can get part of that funding, but not all of that funding. So the DEP funding is going to be approximately $3.3 million of the estimated $4.5 million project. So as you can see, there is a little bit of a gap there. And again, the city's request is, and the utility board's request, I'm sorry, is that a portion of the ARPA funds be redirected for wastewater improvement projects. Again, it will offset the cost ultimately to the ratepayers and help speed us toward rate equalization. So with that, I'll stop. And like I said, I have asked the general manager to join me as well. So if there are any detailed questions, she can assist.
Does anybody have any questions for Charleston County? I don't think we have any. I would just highly recommend you send us everything in writing so we can take a look at it. Certainly do appreciate you all joining us today. And thank you very much, Darryl. I really appreciate the presentation.
Thank you. We will send a letter shortly.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you for letting us speak. You did forward a letter. I won't read the entire thing. The health department has been very involved in the COVID and much of our staff effort have been diverted to that. But we have continued many of our other jobs and are getting fortunately back to some of them. Been involved from the very first, even before the first case appeared, with discussing with many partners in the community of how to be prepared, how to prevent, what to do when they encounter a case. Multiple interactions with the state, discussing with cases and their contacts. And we continue to do that. And then being involved in testing events. And then since mid-December, involved with vaccinations, which has been our primary mission as delegated by the state. During the vaccination events, we were charged with getting the shots in the arm. Most of the times, the vaccine would arrive on Tuesday and we were directed by the state that all of the vaccines had to be administered before Sunday evening. To do this, we were fortunate to have a great number of volunteer assistance as well as other community partners. The directive from the government has been to try and bill the insurance companies for the vaccine administration, not the cost of the vaccine, which is provided free. And actually, until it's in the arm, it's the property of the federal government with the... The... We tried to do that in the vaccine events, but adding that one more complication of getting permission, collecting signatures, an insurance card, was just one more cog that was just too much to deal with. Most health departments throughout the state were unable to collect any insurance at the large events. We estimated the amount of vaccinations given by the health department. We shouldn't say estimated, calculated the number given by health department employees or volunteers, specifically volunteering their time to the health department. And looking at what the reimbursement would have been for Medicare as the index payer, came up with a number of about $255,000 of revenue we lost because we could not take the time, did not have the staff to bill for this. So that is what we are seeking. This money would have largely come from the federal government anyway and involved lots of people going through every single item to be sure that the person did get, you know, the vaccine. The other thing we'd like to ask for is some money to help with a community outreach member to try and get people into service, specifically for health department offered services, which are often considered safety net services, but also to address some of the disparities, particularly with COVID. The Hispanic community and the African-American community were noted to be more severely affected and not receiving testing or vaccinations at the same level. But also continued effort to try and reach out to the elderly and those most physically impacted, most likely to die if they get COVID. So trying increased efforts to vaccinate those people. Since this grant can go through December of 2024, the $95,000 would be about $2,300 a month to partially fund a community worker. So those are the two items that would come to $350,000 requested for this, from this fund. Another issue I want to bring up is not actually requesting money for the health department, but the building that the county lets us use. About five years ago, apparently, there was a concern about the air handling. And at that time, according to our prior administrator, it was thought that $100,000 was needed to fix some of the HVAC system, but that was not approved. Healthcare facility ventilation is specifically mentioned in this rescue plan guidance that we received. And since this is used as a healthcare facility, this may be an opportunity for the county commission to see if that is actually what's causing the problem and could be remedied. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Reed. Does anybody have any questions?
I just have a couple of comments. I have concerns about the request for $155,000 in lost revenue because I don't believe it would qualify. It's not actually lost revenue, it's foregone revenue, meaning that they still have the opportunity to bill for that insurance administrative fee. They have up to a year to bill for that and a year won't expire until sometime in December is when they first begin administering the vaccinations. So I'm not quite sure that this would actually qualify as a loss of revenue.
Okay. Dr. Reed, what I would probably recommend is if you could come in and talk to Michelle and certainly we'll... I know she's very willing to help and we are very glad to help the health department. And perhaps she could show you the avenues, how to fill out that funding that will cover that $250,000 shortfall.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Anybody else have any further questions? All right. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Good morning. Sorry. Apparently, the docking station doesn't like webinars. Thank you for your time this morning. I am here on behalf of Jefferson County Parks and Recreation Commission. My board met last week and discussed some projects that we believe would fit with the ARPA funding that's available. We will be submitting an official letter of request from our board as well with these projects, but wanted to go ahead and bring this to your attention. We are in the process of trying to bring Sam Michaels Park to the next level. You know, as you know, parks have been, you know, highly used. I think a lot of park usage jumped up about 200% across the state of West Virginia during the pandemic. And, you know, we are looking for ways to better improve and better, you know, bring more services to our community. And one need that we need to make that happen is we are currently on a septic system at Sam Michaels Park. There is availability for public sewer right across the street from us at Job Corps. And we have reached out to the Charleston Utility Board about the possibility of tying into that public sewer system. And it is a possibility. So we are asking for a request of approximately $1 million to, you know, plan, design, and hook into the public sewer system and Jefferson County. And in addition, we are... James Height Park, which is the other large park in the county that currently does not have any electric utilities or anything. We would like to request $100,000 for planning and development of infrastructure at James Height Park. This infrastructure would be based on a green infrastructure plan. We believe James Height Park is the perfect location to, you know, have a green park. So this money would help develop that infrastructure to do that. We have sent additional requests. I've already sent that to Michelle as well of just listing losses that we had during the pandemic, monies that we are not able to get back from, you know, programming and facility rentals. And we also had a large, quite a few expenses that were not reimbursed through the CARES Act. So we have sent that list for consideration as well to Michelle. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions?
I just have... Commissioner Tapp has a question.
Go ahead, Jane. I'm sorry.
I just wanted to understand the $100,000 for James Height Park. Is that just for planning the infrastructure? It's in no way going to pay for the... I'm not sure if it's a plan or part of the implementing the plan, you know?
No, at this point, it would be a plan because there is no plan for infrastructure for that park, you know? Ideally, we would love for you guys to fund the infrastructure there as well, but we don't even have a number at this point. We'd have to get an RFP out and get all of those legitimate numbers.
Well, you know, since this money is... A lot of it's specific to infrastructure. You know, if we had a plan ready to go, that would be awesome, but I realize we don't. And it is a park that definitely needs some infrastructure. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Welcome.
I just have one comment on the information that I received regarding your program revenue loss. I just want to make sure that it's kind of a net amount. Although you had programs that were not in place, you had revenue loss from the programs not happening. You also had expenditure decreases as a result. So I want to make sure that we're looking at strictly the net amount. And in addition to the expenditure losses, you did also have income from the PPP loans. So I want to make sure it's offset by that as well. And this would be my only two comments on your program revenue.
Not a problem. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Does anybody else have any further questions? Here, none. Thank you, Ms. Myers. We appreciate your time.
Okay, sorry. Can you hear me now?
Again, yes.
Oh, thank you so much. I just wanted to follow up with what Jennifer had said. I am for another week or two here, the vice president of the Jefferson County Parks and Rec Board. And first of all, we would like to thank the county also regarding the hotel motel money from the rescue plan. But I also wanted to reiterate regarding the million-dollar request for sewer connection at Sam Michaels Park. In addition to this really being allowing us to take the park to the next level for the community in terms of developing a new gym for more community programming, developing... The amphitheater is a big part of what we're trying to develop there. And in addition to helping the community, this is also something that can help bring revenue to the county, both to Jefferson County Parks and Rec and to small businesses here. If we can get the amphitheater developed, we've seen already through the concerts, the free concerts that have been held for the community this year. We're drawing in a lot of people from Northern Virginia already, just already at the beginning of this. If we can develop that amphitheater more, we bring more tourists into this county, we bring more revenue into this county. That means people going out to eat at restaurants here, using stores here, staying at hotels here. This is something that can really help take Jefferson County further into development and bringing in those tourists and that money. And I think that this is an important way to help Jefferson County develop into the greater county that we know it can be. And it's not fancy. We all know infrastructure is not fancy, but this is what needs to happen to develop this park going forward. So I hope that you will consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
I 100% support amenities and tourism in our community. I think that's important and essential. I just want to point out that when I attended the meeting with Senator Manchin, one of the specific questions was can we use this for amenities for parks? The answer was no. So unfortunately.
I would point out that this is not an amenity. I mean, it's a sewer system. It's infrastructure that the park can't really be... Can't be developed more for any... Unless we get connected to the sewer. So it's not really an amenity at this point. And we saw how the parks have been used through COVID and that it is seen as a need by the community. So I would argue that it is not an amenity. It is a piece of necessary infrastructure for the community.
And I would get clarification. I would definitely get clarification from the state auditor's office on the infrastructure applies strictly to residential commercial areas or parks and recs. But I can get clarification.
Yeah. Yeah. I was going to say the exact same thing is we would definitely need clarification before we send this money out. That's one of the things we would definitely do is follow the federal guidelines for money. If it is, if they say it's acceptable, then it's acceptable. We're supposed to certainly follow that. And you brought up the theater there. You guys have a really popular band coming there this weekend. Is that correct?
Yes, The Reagan Years. Come on out. It'll be a great concert.
Yes. I plan to... Thank you all for booking. One of my favorite local bands.
Mine, too.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any further questions for Miss... I don't see any. Well, thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
It doesn't look like I have anyone else who's here.
Okay. Well, we have... We do have some folks here that's live. And if anybody else is on virtual that wants to chime in, certainly we'll take comments, but we'll go ahead. We do have two folks that's our live audience today that will call on them. Come on down, sir. And then we'll start with Mr. Roger Billups.
I'm the chief county engineer and the director of planning, zoning, and engineering. And I had just a couple of items to put on the list for consideration. For the first one, I want to give you a little background and then get to what the issues are. And that's that Charleston had proposed a stormwater project to improve drainage and decrease runoff along Liberty Street. And part of that project included taking our employee parking lot over here and rebuilding it with reducing impervious area and putting in some drainage features and best management practices like rain gardens and so forth. And that... We brought that for the county commission several months back. And the county commission said to proceed with discussions with Greenway Engineering on that and raise any questions and concerns. And we did that. And they're in the process of responding to those and have addressed some of them. And then the next step would be that Greenway comes in and does a presentation of the county commission of what they're proposing to do with the parking lot, so you fully understand what's going on. And we were going to set that up for August 5th, Thursday, August 5th. It's a daytime meeting. They're going to come here. And Randy Kepler told me he probably has a couple of slides that he needs to in the system to show. That's just to get you where you understand what's going on and then a decision of whether or not you want to agree to let your parking lot be included in that project, City of Charleston's project. My understanding at this point is that they are... They would then seek construction funds, grant funds to build it. And I think staff's take at this point is that they're going to pay for it, everything. However, we did, and talking with county commission, agreed to include demolition of the Mason Building over here, a small building that's no longer useful. And they put that in the project and created like a green space with a walkway leading out to Washington Street. So we agreed to do that. And then, and I don't want to get into the area of maintenance director Laura Coon's arena, what she deals with, but just from looking around the parking lot, they're going to build the features they need and then they're going to strip the asphalt out and resurface it. But there's some areas out there that need looked at as far as duck up and repaired. There was some cracking asphalt. It's just indication of poor subgrade. And there's an area that has sunk and needs excavated and looked at. So I don't know if that would be included in the project. We mentioned it. I don't think they were agreeable to that when I talked to Greenway. So what I would do with some of this money is set that aside. I don't know. There's another source for this. We've discussed it a little bit. But for parking lot repairs, I'd probably just set aside $50,000. It's things to make actual repairs to the parking lot before they service it. And then the Mason Building demolition, I think is probably going to be in the range of $25,000 to $50,000. To get rid of that, they might come back and ask you to fund that since that's something we asked for. So we're looking at about $100,000 to be set aside. If they get grant funding to pay for it, then you get your money back. You don't have to spend it. So that was the one I had in mind. The other one is that in the Office of Building Permits and Inspections, we've talked about setting up a customer service computer station. That's where we would have a big screen like we use for reviewing plans. The Blue Beam system tied to MYGO, our digital plan review and customer service system we have. Set that up front so that when someone comes in, they have to make a plan change, the building inspector walk right up front on the computer screen with them and make the changes and get them to sign off. And I would probably budget $15,000 for that. Try to be more user-friendly to the people coming to the office. Any other thing pop to my head and it's... I just want to mention it's outside our arena, but there's always the courthouse annex. If that was ever to move forward, it could use a lot of funds. But I'll leave that to Stephanie. Michelle. So that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Roger? Hey, Jen. Lauren, I'll get Roger. Go ahead, Miss S.
Roger, do you really think the... Well, I can't... Let's see. I've got $50,000 down here for the demolition of Mason Building with its age and so forth and possibility of asbestos. Do you think $50,000 is enough?
Probably about eight or 10 years ago, we demolished a split-level house in a subdivision under property safety. And we had to do it under the DEP requirements. You have to have an asbestos inspection. At that time, the inspection was $800. And then it was a couple thousand dollars to mitigate whatever they found. And then the rest was just actual demolition costs. So when we demolished that house, I think it was about $22,000 was the total cost. So I'm figuring this building doesn't have a basement. It's it's definitely not much larger than that split level. So yeah, inflationary costs, construction costs. I would have thought that it would go for 25,000, but just to be safe, I'd make it 50.
Okay, well, I just was, you know, kind of curious on that price range, but that's.
Yeah.
I knew I knew we're still even talking about this.
I know what you're talking about. We definitely want to clarify that for public. Wrong building, but we are not demoing the Mason Building.
We're going to remove all of them in here and then just not building that.
It's a spoon bill. It's a spoon bill.
Yeah, yes.
Yes, wrong name, right.
All right. Does anybody else have any further questions? Thank you, Roger. Thank you, governor. All right, next we have Maria. I will always put your name, but if you want.
All right, I'll say it for you.
Yeah, you say it for me.
And then you can just call me Maria.
Yes, thank you.
Good morning. My name is Maria Vanian. I'm the executive director of the Charlestown Horsemen's Nemo Protective Association, which is a vital one C six that works for the benefit of the owners and trainers that race and train their thoroughbreds at Holo Casino at Charlestown Races. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today, and I have two proposals. I'll be brief. I said something in writing and because I really wasn't sure what this process was, but this is a little bit briefer. This, the Charlestown HBPA is requesting a grant of $65,000 to have a new study completed on the economic impact of the thoroughbred racing and breeding industry on the West Virginia economy. The previous study that was completed in 2013 provided valuable insights into the economic impact of our industries on business volume, employment, employee compensation and tax revenue in the county and the state, as well as spillover into other industries such as tourism. Unfortunately, the study is woefully out of date and no longer relevant. We're desperately in need of a new study to enable us to continue to support the interests of the horsemen, who, as of the last study, made up 14% of the jobs in Jefferson County. The cost of the study commissioned 2013 was $60,000, and at that time, we had partners to assist in partial funding. We believe the stakeholders, including the West Virginia Thoroughbred Breeders Association that is in support of this request as well, do not have funds to financially support the study, but they're integral to the success of the industry. We respectfully request the Jefferson County Commission award a $65,000 grant to the HBPA for the purpose of commissioning the WVU Bureau of Business and Economic Research to conduct another economic impact study on the thoroughbred racing and breeding industries of West in West Virginia. That's proposal number one. And proposal number two is a request for a grant to develop equine practicum or internship programs for students attending the West Virginia University Davis Davis College of Agriculture at the JW Ruby Research Center or Farm. It's a 900-plus acre farm that's home to the horse unit, beef unit. It was a forage production and plays host to equine and other community events. And the program would be organized by the Charlestown HBPA in collaboration with Dr. Crystal Smith, who is a teaching associate and professor at WVU. The funds would sponsor job training that would enhance the equine studies curriculum at WVU. Small businesses seeking qualified applicants here in Charlestown would be provided with a group of prospective skilled employees. We're having trouble finding vets, people to work in the barn area. We're having trouble attracting trainers. So the program would allow students to shadow or work with owners, breeders, trainers, vets, state regulators and track management, and would encourage West Virginia University graduates to enter the Jefferson County workforce. Estimated cost per student per week would include wages and or lodging, depending on the program, and insurance as required by WVU. We're considering one week externships over spring break that would cost approximately $1,100 per student. And we're also considering three month internships at a per student rate of $15 per hour, working eight hours a day, six days a week, with expectation for call-ins for emergencies and foals falling issues and racing issues. And there would be some incidental expenses. We calculate the wage, the wage issue to be about $8,600 for the three month period, plus an additional maybe $200 in other costs per student. So we're requesting a grant for $50,000 per year for three years. And we hope that you'll consider this externship and internship program so that we can try and cultivate some new interests and keep some of the WVU graduates in West Virginia working in Jefferson County. I will say to you that because this was in the other, I don't do all speaking off script. But some of the things you need to know is that the second quarter, we had about a 52% loss in revenue, which was about $55,000. And when Q4, we had about a 22% loss in revenue, which was about $22,000. We have applied and we were successful in getting payroll protection loans. So we're in the process of using those right now, and we're slowly coming out of the losses we've experienced. I'm not familiar with this process. And so if you need any financials or any other additional information, then what I put in that that little bit longer version, I'm happy to provide whatever information you need.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Maria? I don't, I don't see any. Thank you very much for your presentation that I didn't receive.
Great, thank you. Only there are two typos in there, so I'll have to fix this. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Next, we have Mr. You're Burgess.
Yes.
Did you want to come forward?
I'm going to go over this first. I did not catch all the presentation. Has anyone brought up the commission meeting?
So Sarah, you can, you can come on up here and talk off. Do you have a floor, sir? If you want to, just for, so for the public's purpose, you can announce your meeting with the department.
Sure, Russell Burgess. I'm the director of information technology for the Jefferson County Commission. And what I came here this morning to discuss was one of the issues, since we went to the hybrid meeting format. And actually, even before that, was to look to see if we could use some of these monies to upgrade our audio video here in this commission meeting room. It is a project we have already started to kind of undertake just to get bids quotes, to bring some people in to look at the room and give us ideas. Think one of the things that kind of affects us here is a lot of the equipment is old and this room is, I guess, Stephanie, this is leased, or Michelle, it's leased, so we don't necessarily own this room. One of the things that's been brought up is having power here. You'll notice if you bring in your laptop or anything like that, you have no way to plug it in. You have to run a cord across the floor, which is, I don't know, probably not the most ideal solution because someone gets out or trips over or anything like that. And some of the things they bring in is, oh, we'll just trench the floor or something like that. Obviously, we can't do that on leased space. So they want to bring like an elevated little platform to run these in. And I don't know if that's something the commission would approve or anything like that. But the other thing is our equipment is, a couple of the parts of it have just failed. It's been great. It's lasted, I think, I've been here seven, eight years and it was here. Yep, it was here then. We have a couple of things. I think you were here in one of the meetings. You were here in one of the meetings when part of it failed. We did not get that part back. We kind of patched it together to make it work. So we would like to budget, I I don't even have a very good number, but I estimated maybe $50,000 to redo this room. With that being said, I don't know if the commission has looked at or entertained other rooms. We've had some of these things about moving the meetings. If the audio visual capability should be mobile, we are looking at something that do we do something where we have mobile capabilities to move somewhere off site? Or do we look at just this particular room? And that's one of the things I just want to discuss and bring up your ideas if you have ideas for it. Because this is, you know, I don't want to sit here and say, well, this is what we're, we really want to do. We want to make sure that everybody in the community, I mean, the point of, I think, is for the citizens to be able to access these meetings in a more convenient fashion.
And I will say that since we have switched to a hybrid method, we have more participation. So we have, you know, because it's more convenient to just log on. And if you want to comment, you don't have to spark or you don't have to talk to the house. So we could track sheer numbers with the webcast. We can actually stream while we're not here. But we're definitely getting more participation through go to webinar than we were with just the webcast.
No, I agree. Having the hybrid meetings is something that I want to continue for forever. I think it's, until the next new thing comes out, I don't know what that might be. But it's COVID has taught us a lot and it's taught that, taught us that we don't, we can still do business at separate locations. And and it's just last week at our county commission meeting, we had one of our staff members. They were on vacation. They had come on our meeting, chimed in, off their vacation for 10 minutes. They clicked on their computer on the dining office and and they're still on vacation, which I think it works out very well. So the technology, we need to get up with the times, I think is a great idea. I really do. Like you said, we have more participation. We probably need more cameras to make it more friendly or that people can see us very well. And hopefully they can hear as well. I do have some complaints. If 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 we're not speaking loud enough, maybe to the to the right side that we're in, to the right side of me, excuse me. They have, they have problems. Maybe some more speakers. I don't know. That's your, that's your, that's your department.
That's what we want to bring in, you know, some professionals who look at that. One of the things that that we've had before is with the wireless microphones. They've been great, but you don't want them on all the time because then you get people talking over each other. But the other thing is with the wireless, it's voice activated. So sometimes what was happening with it, you missed the first couple of words of when someone is speaking. And everybody says, you need to be wired. Well, the problem is there's no wires coming across the floor. So I I have been very hesitant to give anybody, you know, put something across the floor. I don't, even if it's just raised a little bit, it's something you trip up.
Sure.
I I don't like that, but it seems that that everyone I talk to is always having this the same thing. You're not going to run wires and you won't wire, but you're going to have some limitations. And so I don't know. That's one of the things we're bad.
So you've already gone out, the RFPs that you said you're already looking at.
All we are doing is requesting discussions and having some people come in and look at the rooms and talk to us about what we have. One of the things that we have is speakers in the ceiling. That's what's working right now. Speakers in the ceiling and microphones in the ceiling. And that's one of the reasons why they don't hear so well. If you sit here and talk like this, they don't hear you that right. But, you know, that's one of the things we want to figure out how to do that. But if we don't have cabling or wiring right now to these tables, then we have that issue. But then the cameras too, because if you're looking online and you're watching this, you see the back of my head.
Yeah.
And if you really want to see who is speaking, I think that's that's important.
I think that's it. Does anybody else have any further questions?
I have a few requests that came in from departments, and I just wanted to present to the commission on behalf of the departments. The first request was that the COLA increase be implemented at a cost of about $75,000. We're pretty close to 7-1, so we could pick a later date if the commission chooses to increase the COLA increase. The cost was about $75,000 originally proposed in the fiscal year 22 budget. For the second increase would be merit increases, the cost originally proposed in the fiscal year 22 budget was about $195,000. You know, if we're too late for July 1st, we could always pick a later date, January 1st or September 1st. The third request came from actually viewing a newspaper article. The ARPA funds allow for premium pay for employees who worked during the pandemic. And it's allowed to be paid retroactively to January 27th of 2020 at an amount not greater than $13 an hour. If we were to pay that amount, it would be probably four or five million dollars. So I would not recommend we do that. What the city of Hagerstown did was they developed a smaller malice stipend, so to speak, to compensate employees for actually working during the pandemic, giving them that premium without actually giving them the full amount that they could actually do. So they created stipulations on that. Employees had to work a certain number of days. They had to actually be in the office. They had to work directly or indirectly with the public. And it was used to acknowledge the fact that those employees faced employment-related health risks that were associated with actually working with the public during the pandemic. Hagerstown initially proposed a $3,000 stipend for employees who met certain criteria. If we were to impose $3,000, I would estimate that cost at about $625,000. When it was actually approved last week, the city council felt that it wasn't enough to recognize the work that employees actually did perform and health risks that they were actually exposed to. So they actually increased it to $5,000 per employee in that retro premium pay. If we were to include our component units, because of course we do have ESA, we have the Health Department, we have other, other agencies that report that are kind of under our umbrella, that would increase that amount to approximately $805,000. So it would be about an additional $180,000 if we did just the $3,000. So that's that request. Then the last request was from three departments. Now that the general operating revenue loss funding has been restored, departments are requesting a restoration of the five positions that were eliminated due to the loss of funding, not not loss of work, but loss of funding. That is estimated to be about $380,000. And those are the requests that I, I crossed off one because Russ came in. So those are the requests that I have from the departments.
And COLA and merit qualify?
COLA, because we've been using it, using our revenue loss. You know what I mean? It wouldn't necessarily come directly out of ARPA, but we've replaced the revenue that we lost. So, you know, it would qualify because it would be a general operating expense.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud. This is just for the department. It's being sustained going forward without knowing what revenues are going to be. That that would be my concern. With that.
All right. Does anybody have any further questions for Russ?
Well, I have one other one that I had a question, and this I guess is more for Michelle in as far as funding and if this would be qualified. Is upgrading our email system, is that possibly because of the use of communications?
Essentially, because internet and email, I'm sorry, IT infrastructure was definitely included. That is certainly something that I would clarify with the state auditor's office, but on the, initially, I think.
Okay, that's something we'd really like to do. Our email system is Microsoft Exchange. It's 2013. It was one of those systems that was affected in the breach a couple of months ago. It was something that has been running and functioning. I had not planned to run in the coming budget year, but the year after, it was a planned upgrade to do that. But now with cybersecurity and issues because of this breach, if that could be included, that would be really, really for the county.
Would you estimate $20,000, $50,000?
I will have to go back and look, but with all the email accounts and everything we have, I would estimate probably 75. But if that were qualified, and we could do that sooner rather than later, that would be very dangerous for the county. Because it is our, it's how I think we communicate with everybody.
Okay.
And when we got exchange, that was a great, you know, when we finally upgraded just to get exchange. I remember that was just me. It was a huge changer because it, it, it's between all your devices and so, I mean, I remember we got exchange in ours.
That was just like this. I think that was the first or second year I was here. And that was one of the things we got here is email is horrible, calendar is horrible, nothing works very well. Everybody just loves this. And now email is, I mean, it's a vital function for everybody. They just can't continue without it. If anything goes wrong in the county, especially email, that is the first thing I do. My phone rings immediately. It's like, hey, what happened? It's been down for like two minutes.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions for Russ? All right, here now, we're going to go back to the people at the online. If there's somebody else that is, anybody else is on live, we'll have Stephanie calling you if you've raised your hand and chat function or.
And we have Sheriff Hansen.
Okay. Good. What would, once we turn on?
I've been making them a panelist, so you can see them if they want you to.
Okay, did you? Absolutely.
But I have, so Sheriff Hansen, I have media panelists. That's okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning. It's Debbie. Sheriff Hansen and Teresa are here with us this morning. So we are very pleased to see that a stipend is being considered for employees. We were looking at requesting a stipend that was maybe slightly more for those people who are actually responding to homes and having to go into them. We felt that maybe there should be a little bit difference. We felt that maybe there should be a little bit difference between those people and people working in the office. So that's something that I can maybe talk to Michelle about later if you'd like, but we were looking at maybe 7,500 instead of 5,000 for those who were actually responding to homes. We were also looking to see if we could get money for vehicles, which was about $165,000. And as you guys are aware, our animal control building is in desperate need of repair. There is a house next door to it that we were looking to see if we could get funds to help renovate it, to make that into their offices. And then the kennel could still be in the current animal control facility. And that would be about $50,000.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Sorry, I had to wait for a second. Sorry. Well, I don't hear you. Certainly, if you don't mind, let me get the, submit your requests. And we'll be glad to receive that. We're obviously going to leave the comment for two weeks. We certainly appreciate you all coming on today and making your requests.
Thank you for having us.
Yeah, thank you.
And now we have Carrie Smith. Thank you for having me. Smith, this.
You go ahead, do your comments. Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Okay. My screen's not showing up for some reason, but that's okay. Anyways, I appreciate everyone's time this morning. My name is Carrie Smith. I'm the coordinator for the Sexual Assault Nurse Examiner Program, housed out of Jefferson Medical Center. We were employed through WVU Medicine East, so we cover Jefferson Medical Center and Berkeley Medical Center. I do a program that not a lot of people want to talk about because they don't know a lot about it. But I currently see all the sexual assaults and domestic violence cases that come out of Jefferson County. We see adults and we see pediatrics. They come, they present to the hospital and we do the forensic exams there. We collect evidence for the state and we send that to the state to have them analyze that. And then we go to prosecution with them, with the attorneys, to testify in court cases for them. Currently, in the entire state of West Virginia, there's only two programs, forensic programs in the entire state. One's out of Morgantown and we cover the Eastern Panhandle. We just started two years ago, right before COVID, to have 24-hour services to our victims. And then COVID hit, so we slowed down a little bit because a lot of people were not coming to the hospital, not reporting. Since the kids have been back in school, we've been inundated with a lot of abuse and neglect and sexual assault on pediatrics minors in our county. I'm sure a lot of you have read about them in the papers. They come to our hospital and we do the forensic exams on them. There's no charge to these patients, so the hospital does not receive any money for any of these exams. They're all free of charge. I'm currently asking for $30,000 for our budget for the next three years. And that will provide us with, we need a new forensic camera to do these exams so that we have a secure way of sending them to prosecuting attorney's offices and to law enforcement over the internet, and also to do peer review with Morgantown. It's especially hard for our pediatric patients because they don't want to sit still, obviously, for an exam. So we can videotape those exams and take pictures afterwards. Current, I'm also asking for money within that budget to cover also a lot of my nurses, to get more trained. Currently, right now, in the entire Eastern Panhandle, there's only one pediatric sexual assault nurse examiner. There's not even a physician, and that's myself. So I've been covering all of the cases for anyone under the age of 12 in our county at the hospital there. So that would go to cover more training for our nurses and some strangulation training so that we can take on strangulation cases as well. The hospital supports us fully and they house us and they pay us, but they do not give us money for our program. So we're currently using a handheld camera, so a new forensic camera that is compatible with Morgantown's camera so we can view evidence with them, is what I'm asking for. Currently, in the past, all of our victims had to cross state lines and go to Virginia for these services. So now we're offering them in-state, which helps a lot with prosecution. We're just trying to build the program here for the Eastern Panhandle. So I'm foreseeing that this $30,000 could go over at least the next three years. And the hospital has guaranteed me they will pick up the cost after that for the maintenance of the camera system.
I have one question. Is that $10,000 a year for 30,000 or is it 30,000 a year for 90,000?
No, it's $30,000 for the three years. The 15, there's $15,000 for the camera system. And then there's $2,000 a year for the maintenance on that, and that will be spread out over the three years. And also, it'll cover for the training for my nurses. So it's just $30,000 and that'll include the maintenance for three years. WVU Medicine has agreed to pick up that cost after that, for the maintenance.
Well, thank you very much. Does anybody else have any further questions?
Yeah, I do. So you're covering Eastern Panhandle?
Yes, I covered Jefferson Medical Center and Berkeley Medical Center. However, I am housed out of Jefferson Medical Center. So currently, right now, since I'm the only pediatric, one trained to do this, I'm only doing cases for all the pediatricians in Jefferson County.
That would be my question, if you'd ask Berkeley County Council for any type of assistance as well.
Yes, Berkeley County is supporting. They're going to provide me a camera for Berkeley Medical Center through there. I think it was the golf classic tournament they had, and they were going to fund me a camera through that.
Right, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Does anybody else have anything? I'm hearing. So thank you for coming on and participating.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Our next speaker is Mary Sal. Here, anyone for you?
Hi, this is Mary Sal. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Was that a yes? I'm sorry.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you, Jane. This is Mary Sal. I'm from the Jefferson County Water Advisory Committee. I'm here to talk about a proposal that JCWAAC has put before you before for a hydrology study. We would like to be reconsidered should the funds become available. We believe it would fit under a public health and the water, broad investment, waters investment parameters, or some number five under ARP. Just briefly, you have the hydrology study. We have matching funds from the USGS of $143,000. The request would be a total of $397,000, which is just under $100,000 per year for a three-year study. It would be on 60, 60 streams and to give a water quality study for the county's purposes. It would be done by the USGS and it would be published online for the public data. Secondly, there is also an addition to that study. If the county commission was interested in a water dating study, which would give an indication about water refresh, it's an age dating study on these wells and springs. That would be an additional $50,000. That is proposal one and 1A. Proposal number two is a new study I have not put before you. And it is a study for a countywide sinkhole study to map the sinkholes in the county. And again, it would be with USGS providing half of the funding. The funding, it was, it is $60,000 total. And depending whether or not the NCRS also participates, then it would be $25,000. And that would be a overhead LiDAR study and then a ground truthing study. We are confirmed, and would get the data, that both these studies are qualified through EPA revolving funds. And I can put more warning to you for your consideration, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
Mary, I did not hear the cost of the sinkhole study, the total cost.
The total cost is $60,000. If it's shared by USGS, the total cost of the county would be 30,000.
Okay.
30,000. It would be cost here. I'm sorry, if it's shared by USGS is 30. If it's shared by USGS and NCRS, it'd be approximately 25.
Okay.
25 to 30, maybe the apron number.
Right, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, well, everything you've, your presentation, because we have it, right? It would be very helpful. And thank you for participating. Thank you, Miss Sal.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
It looks like she was our last.
Okay, well, if we have any more to jump on, we'll, we'll talk. Again, I'll reiterate, I certainly do want to leave the comment for two weeks. And like they have heard about initiative that they want to bring forward to us that maybe listen to the other presenters. I know it's summertime and other people on vacation, there could have been folks that missed today's meeting. And certainly you'll have two weeks to go ahead and send your, any ready comments into the county will certainly accept. We did backfill some of our revenue loss at last Thursday's meeting. I wanted Michelle Gordon to kind of briefly describe to you how we did that. And I'll just give a floor to her and she can describe how we backed it, some of our revenue loss for 2020.
So based on the formula that was provided to us from the Treasury guidance, we were able to backfill Treasury. We determined our average annual increase for the three years prior to the pandemic and determined that the guidance said that we could use either our average annual increase or 4.1%, whichever was greater, 4.1% was greater than our average annual increase. So I added 4.1% to our base year, which was the last full calendar year prior to the pandemic. And I subtracted our actual revenue during that period to come up with the amount of revenue loss based on a 4.1% growth increase. So our revenue loss was $1.5 million. Now, of that revenue loss, part of that was due to the occupancy tax. And we were able to distribute about 400, 516,000 to our Convention Visitors Bureau, Parks and Recreation, Historic Landmarks Commission, and Arts and Communities to offset their revenue loss and that personal occupancy tax. So they've already been made whole. The checks should go out this week to them regarding for that revenue loss. The remainder of the revenue loss goes back into the general fund as part of our general fund operating revenues. So the remainder is 1.1 million and that is in the general fund right now for general fund operating expenditures. And then I just have a couple additional comments that I wanted to point out for our listening viewers, people who want to come back and listen to it. We do have a page set up on the county's website discussing the American Rescue Lane Grant describes the allowable usage of those funds. And I just want to point out that the usage categories are very broad. The guidance is meant to serve both state, county, and city needs. So I recommend that the county focus on the services that are typically provided by the county and the needs of the county government and the county government component units. The state and the cities will create spending initiatives and grant programs to address the services that they typically provide. So just as an example for anyone who's listening, the county doesn't normally provide road infrastructure, even though it's not something that's allowable in the county, that's just an example. So if someone came to us with a road infrastructure and if it was an allowable expense, we would probably refer them to the state. And then the last thing that I wanted to let you know would be that I'll compile and summarize all the requests that we received today. I'm also compiling a review request that we received over the next two weeks and we'll get that out to you and we'll probably schedule meetings throughout July, August, and even into September and October, and maybe even over the next year, to go over those types of requests and potential projects, potential grant programs that may want to implement for the county. We did administer a grant program for CARES Act funding that we received, and I think it worked very well. So those are the types of things that we will be discussing for the next couple of months.
Okay, thank you. And just so I'm clear, the 1.5 that we backed it was for 2020.
Correct.
And we can still do that following through the year of 2024. So the first quarter next year, we can look back at 2021, this year, to see our loss. And we can say, okay, this year may, 2020 was one and a half, next year might be whatever the number is. And we can do that for essentially three more years.
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make that clear for our listeners and how we will use it and will most likely potentially use that moment to backfill any losses in our general funds.
Also, I want to say, I mean, broadband, obviously, is very important. Commissioner Adams, I think, the committee, and Stephanie being an active participant, we should probably pull some of those numbers together from the presentation for last commission meeting and find out, and submit our request for it, probably.
So he did have numbers, but when I last, so initially, he was really, he really wanted us to use the art funds, but now he wants us to hold back and wait for the state because they're going to have their own broadband. And they're hearing that there's maybe some more broadband money coming from the feds as well. But I do have those preliminary numbers if we went ahead and just funded the fixed point wires, so I can get those in.
Yeah, we can get those in, and anything that comes in, if we don't need to use the county funds for, then we can adjust. But broadband is really going to be important, particularly Commissioner Solinger's point was, you know, doing the hybrid meetings and being able to be remote and all of that, it's going to be important.
Yeah. I agree with Commissioner Jackson as I looked over the information that Michelle sent us on the, sort of the outlines of the rules and regulations or guidance. You know, that's one thing I had on my list. And also too, I do think we had a request from the day report center that we weren't able to fulfill, and there may be something here that would help that because it's, you know, deals with drug problems and recovery. So I'm sure we'll get more requests in the next couple of weeks and it'll be interesting to see and what may and may not qualify, I don't know. I'll look to Michelle for some guidance on some things. We'll see.
Yes, Michelle, Michelle's going to be very busy.
Yes.
She's very popular.
Yes. Does any of the other commissioners have anything?
I mean, one of my other questions, Michelle, someone has wanted to, how would you define the difference of amenity versus infrastructure?
Well, just from reading the guidance, I mean, it's all infrastructure, but just from reading the guidance, the guidance specifically says infrastructure to meet the needs of residential areas. And I think it might have included commercial, didn't necessarily include amenities, which would be a part. So I would definitely need to reach out to the state to make sure that an infrastructure need for a park would qualify as compared to the infrastructure needs of providing broadband to a remote area that has residential houses.
Okay. I'm glad you asked that because that was one of the same thing.
It's all infrastructure, it's just serving different needs. I just want to make sure that that need is okay.
Sure.
Okay.
Does any commissioner said anything else? Or does anybody else have any, Stephanie, Michelle? Hear none. We will, if there are no objections, we will adjourn. We'll certainly be everybody, I guess, next Thursday, our Rayford County Commission meeting at 9:30 here. We'll certainly, everybody, I guess, next Thursday, our Rayford County Commission meeting at 9:30 here in the Florida. Thank you all, and thank you everybody for participating.
None? Bye.